Designated negotiators attending the closed session are Yasmin Beers, Rubik Galanian, Michael J. Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Matt Doyle, and Michelle Flynn. The names of the employee organizations are Glendale City Employees Association, Glendale Management Association, Glendale Police Officers Association, Glendale Firefighters Association, and IBW Local 18 Unit 40, Unrepresented Employees, Executives, and Confidential Employees. B would be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code Section 54956.9, one potential case. C, public employment attorneys. D, conference with real property negotiators. Property location, 2713 Honolulu Avenue. Negotiating parties, Armstrong Gardens Centers, Ganji Development, Heritage Housing Partners, Operation Confidence, Paseo Capital Partners, Roman Catholic, Arstiasis of Los Angeles, and Specialized Realty Incorporated. Agency negotiators attending the closed session are Yasmin Beers, Rubik Galanian, Mike Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Philip Lanzafin, Darlene Sanchez, Jennifer Hiromoto, Michelle Flynn, and Onik Belonikian. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the sale or lease of property. E, conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Claim of Yukuma, claim number 18-0018.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, are you reporting on those items?
Mr. Mayor, I anticipate reporting out on item 1C.
There will be recess in the closed session. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, are you reporting on those items?
Mr. Mayor, I anticipate reporting out on item 1C.
There will be recess in the closed session. Thank you. 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 Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 18, 2020 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable, Charter and Spectrum, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T Uverse, Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100 on your screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brockman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakin.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Ajajanian. Mr. Councilmember, actually Najarian, would you lead us in the flag, please?
Yes, I will, thank you. Will everyone please rise and face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. We pray and give thanks for the many blessings bestowed upon us and ask for continuous guidance in all aspects of our lives, especially the leadership of our city during the most difficult times. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We pray for all of this and for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you, amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the August 18, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Tuesday, August 11, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Three would be presentation and appointments. Three, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, August 25, 2020.
Mr. -- yes, our city assistant city manager, Renee Pasandi.
Good evening.
Mr. Bul-- okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For August 25, 2020, on the Glendale Housing Authority Agenda, there is one item from community development regarding first-time homebuyer program COVID-19 Financial Relief Proposed Policy Change. For the regular Glendale City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, we have three consent items, starting with community service on parks regarding the acceptance of Measure H funds to provide workforce assistance to individuals that are homeless, followed by innovation, performance, and audit regarding audit committee annual report and internal audit annual work plan. Lastly, Glendale Water and Power regarding amendment to Transmission Services Agreement for Hoover Power. Under action items, we only have one item from city attorney regarding COVID-19 update, consideration of extension or amendment of public orders related to the residential eviction moratorium, rent increase freeze, and face coverings. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. What's next, please?
Next would be employee recognition. Kirk White, Glendale Youth Alliance, Community Service in Parks.
Okay. I hope he is watching us. Okay, presented to Mr. Kirk White, Community Services and Parks. In recognition of your outstanding effort in going beyond the call of duty to help save a life, your heroic act was truly invaluable and has touched the lives of many people in our community. On behalf of the City of Glendale, thank you for providing exceptional community service and we wish you continued success. Signed by me, Varish Agajanian, Mayor. But I have to read what Mr. Kirk White has done for the general public. Mr. Kirk White was returning a container for a resident when the homeowner's dog alerted him by barking that there was an issue. The homeowner had fallen in her backyard and couldn't get back up. Kirk helped her up and got her back in the house. The daughter called the city and said it would have possibly saved her mother's life due to the heat. She said that her mom was already out there an hour before Kirk helped her. Thank you, and I have Mayor's commendation for Mr. Kirk White.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. White is on WebEx. If you'd like to say a few words.
Yes, please, Mr. White.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for having all this. I'm just blessed and thankful that I was at the right place at the right time to help someone out in need. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. Yes, Ms. Devine.
Kirk, you are an exemplary employee and it just makes all of us proud to have residents, people, staff members like you that are out there going above and beyond the call of duty, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Kirk, I have a question. This is Councilman Najarian. I mean, it kind of sounds like a lassie moment. How in the world did you understand a dog to communicate to you that there was something wrong as opposed to just barking at you for being in the property?
Right. It was very much like a lassie moment. Usually, when I would return the containers, I would see Sandy the dog at the window, but this time she was outside of the home barking. And when getting close to seeing her, I noticed that she wasn't barking in an aggressive manner. Her tail wasn't stiff. You know, her teeth wasn't showing or growling in such a way. It was kind of a bark as like, hey, I have something to show for you. Like, hey, I'm trying to get your attention. This is my language to human language. So it was strange, but I'm happy that we were able to communicate.
Right. Well, thank you for, as Ms. Devine said, and the mayor, thank you for your dedication and your awareness that resulted in saving the life of one of our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brockman.
I'm just wondering why the dog isn't here getting a commendation as well? It sounds like a pretty remarkable animal.
That's very true. All animals are very effective. Anyway, thank you. Now, the next commendation, it's City of Glendale, Mayor's commendation, presented to Luis Westendorf, Water System Apprentice, GWP. In recognition of your outstanding effort in going beyond the call of duty to help save a life, his heroic act was truly invaluable and has touched the lives of many people in our community. On behalf of the City of Glendale, thank you for providing exceptional community service and we wish you continued success. Signed by me, Varish Agajanian, Mayor. And I read what Mr. Westendorf did. Just after 2:00 PM on July 30, 2020, Water System Apprentice Luis Westendorf was working with his crew on the 1100th block of Everett Street when he observed a man on the side of the street who was choking. The man was accompanied by a woman who was making unsuccessful attempts to assist the man. Luis ran over and gave the man the Heimlich maneuver, which dislodged and dislodged the blockage in the man's throat. The man began breathing again. And he says, "I was told that other people observed this and had their cell phone cameras out recording the event rather than going and helping this poor man." Thank you, Luis, and I hope you want to say a few words to our audience or viewers.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Oh, yeah, so I want to thank you guys for this recommendation. I just wanted to point out the fact that the importance of having that first aid and CPR training that we are provided with there at GWP, it really helped out in this situation. Again, like Kirk said, I was just placed at the right time, fortunately for that man. But yes, thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, and this is the commendation for you. So we will pass it to you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Just a comment that how amazing that you had the wherewithal and the quick thinking to go over and help to see something like that happening. And it's just extraordinary. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Proud to have you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Devine.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, what's next?
Consent items including, "The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed."
Tell me the items.
Just a second. I want to pull an item.
Which one?
The one that refers to the records retention.
That's D.
4D?
And I'd like to pull 4C, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, we pulled 4C and 4D. Do I have second for the balance of the consent items?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you. So now, would you read item 4C, please?
Public Works Regarding Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Regional Improvements Project, State Project Number ATPSB1L-5144071 and CFDA Number 20.205. One motion awarding the construction contract to Palp Incorporated DBA Excel Paving Company in the amount of $3,478,930 approving a 10% reserve for the contingency in the amount of $347,890.3 rejecting all other bids and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Resolution of appropriation to transfer or appropriate funds for the Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Regional Improvement Project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just ask why I pulled this item. It goes hand in hand with our previous presentation from MetroLink and Metro regarding our train station. And we've learned that our train station is going to be offering very frequent service from Glendale to LA Union Station, as well as north to Burbank Airport and all the way up. And the cornerstone of making transit more available and more convenient is the first mile, last mile. Often, those are the toughest miles to either get to the train station or to get back home once you disembark the train. And you have put together a proposal, Mr. Yazd, and for our contractors to bid on. We did have some bidding. Can you give us just the highlights of the improvements that are going to be done, as well as something that the bike community has asked for quite a long time? As well as the source of those funds, as to where they're coming from?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Najarian. Yes, this is a great project. We're quite excited about it. It encompasses the area around the train station that we have. The project locations are on Los Feliz Road, Gardena Avenue, the Central Avenue, El Bonita Avenue, Cerritos, Miraloma, and San Fernando Road. The project includes pavement rehab of the streets. We have different types of improvements that we're doing, including sidewalks repair and curb and gutter replacement. But in terms of what you mentioned, which is the bicycle infrastructure improvements, we are adding a different bike lanes, basically, protected bike lanes for the area in that area. For example, the Los Feliz Road between City of LA Limit and San Fernando Road, Cerritos Avenue between Gardena and San Fernando Road, Central Avenue between Gardena and San Fernando Road, and Garden Avenue between Los Feliz Road and Cerritos Avenue. All are going to have different types of bicycle improvements. Some of these include a protected bike lane. We have a protected bike lane that we have. Some of them are Class 2 bike lanes and the rest of them are Class 3 or sharrows. So basically, this is something that we look forward to implementing for our other projects as well, according to the bicycle transportation, bicycle master plan, as I call it, to have these types of improvements as we improve the different streets within the City of Glendale.
And a large portion of the funds are coming from Metro, which does not only support trains, buses, and freeways, but it's also used for active transportation purposes, bikeway purposes. And we have other sources of funds as well in this. But I know the bike lanes aren't as far as we would like them to be, but it's a step. You know, what the ancient Chinese philosopher says, "A long journey begins with the first step." Thank you, Yazd.
Thank you.
And may I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we going to be painting green any of these bike lanes? So that I think that these areas would be really helped if the lanes were green so people could really see them because of the traffic near the train station.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Devine. We are going to stencil and stripe these green so they stand out, and it would definitely help with our biking community.
Safety. Thank you so much. Thank you.
There's another question, Tom.
For Councilman 4C.
You have, you seconded. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Now, item 4D.
This would be City Attorney regarding recommendation to destroy specified litigation. Claims, prosecution, general and parking citation records retained by the City Attorney. A resolution approving destruction of certain city records.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item before you is part of our regular records destruction that occurs either annually or every other year, related to files only retained in our office and the City Attorney's office. Generally, case files for civil litigation, damages, prosecution cases, citations, our general files, personnel files for employees who separated, honor before July 1, 2017, in this case. And those, again, those are our employees in our office, not other departments. And then I know there was a question about the Pichus motions. A Pichus motion is a motion that is filed by an attorney, either in a civil case or criminal case, seeking information from either the personnel file or regarding complaints regarding a particular officer. And there's a showing that they have to show even to be able to get the judge to consider turning those over. And then they may or may not be turned over depending on whether or not they're relevant to the inquiry made by the attorney. What I want to point out here, the Pichus motions that are proposed for destruction are the motions that are, all the files relate to the motions, our opposition motions that are in our office. They do not contain any personnel complaints or any personnel files of police officers. Those are maintained by the department. In fact, we never even, even through the motion process, we never even have the opportunity, we were never in control of those. Those are always within the control of the custodian of the police department. So those motions are just like any other litigation file. Once the statute of limitations is run and what's, the Pichus motion is no longer relevant, it is proposed for destruction. So those are sort of the areas on which the documents are within our records destruction resolution for this year. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brodmann.
Yeah, I brought this up because in part I wanted the explanation that Mr. Garcia just gave us. So just clear, because I got a few emails on this and there was some stuff on social media. So what we're destroying is just the requests or the, yeah, the request for that personnel information, but not the underlying information.
Correct. That's correct.
So we're, okay. And I just wanted to make sure people understood that. And I wanted to suggest that we agendize a discussion of our records retention policy because I think it would be good to make that explicit and people understand, you know, how long we keep things and what we get rid of and why. And maybe it's, maybe it can be a little bit different than what we've been doing because so many things are digitized, so the cost of retaining records is lower. But if we could, if I, you know, if we could put something together, if you could put something together and bring that to council, you know, I don't think it's super urgent, but I think, you know, there should be a clear policy and we should make sure everybody understands what it is.
We'll work with the City Clerk's Office and probably also IPA to bring that information to you.
Thank you.
If there's a second.
Is there a second?
I will second. Okay, thank you. What's next, Senator?
I'll move a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Do you want to move 4D?
Yeah, I'll move it. I'll move 4D.
Okay, Mr. Najarian, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments from my council members, my colleagues? Oh, Mr. Najarian.
I have some. I have two, actually. I wanted to raise to the council and to the city the issue of the devastating and tragic blast which occurred in Beirut, Lebanon on August 4th. So far, there are 180 dead, 6,000 or more wounded, tens of thousands homeless. Beirut is a city that holds a near part to my heart. My dad went to medical school there and my mom went to nursing school. Many of the residents of our City of Glendale have ties to Beirut, if not having been born there, have family there. Likewise, almost every time a member of parliament from Beirut travels to the Los Angeles area, invariably, they make a stop in the Phoenisha Restaurant, whether it's someone from a political party hosting it or just members of the expatriates of Lebanon. So I'd like to know if we could, and this is, of course, it's been a heck of a year. We've had the pandemic continually causing us issues. We've had the civil rights issues, fires. But I don't think we should forget about the people in Lebanon. And through a sign of solidarity, if we could maybe put the colors of the Lebanese flag on City Hall, I know we did that for Pride Week, and perhaps on our website, link some of the donation sites where people who want to donate to the victims in Beirut can click and at least be directed to the right part. I think it's, although we don't have a sister city with any place in Beirut, I think we do have significant ties as Glendale residents. And I hope, without objection, we could-
I don't know if you need a second to-
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if there's interest from the City Council administratively, I have the ability to make sure that we set aside a timeline where City Hall can have the lights adorned on City Hall. So if there's interest administratively, we can do this. There's no need for me to, you know, bring a report back to the City Council. So if there's some level of interest, we will do it administratively.
I would definitely support that given the many of our residents trace their roots back to Lebanon. I think it's a nice gesture and I do support the comments of Councilmember Najarian.
And I also agree, 100%.
Okay. Mr. Brodmann?
Yes, I'm on board.
Okay, so we all join to Mr. Najarian?
I'm sure they will deeply appreciate our concern for that.
Beirut is pride of Middle East.
Paris, used to be called the Paris of the Middle East.
Yes.
Not so much.
Okay.
We'll make it happen, Mr. Mayor.
Ms.?
One more, sorry. Sorry, one more. I'm talkative today because I'm in person. I just, I see Mr. Zern is in the room and we've all been receiving emails from the ISO regarding possible blackouts and brownouts through the region. And I'd just like you to address that and let us know how we are faring in Glendale, how our power usage has been. And perhaps a discussion on, brief discussion on the advantages of having a locally-based power source at Grayson, whatever form that may be, whether it's hydrogen or battery power or thermal units. What advantages would that type of power availability bring us in these circumstances that we're in this week?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Najarian, we certainly, for almost a week, have faced a tremendous challenge due to both internal issues and external issues, not just GWP, but as you mentioned, throughout the region and throughout the state. Utilities, power generators, and transmission service agencies have all been taxed. And there actually have been rolling blackouts in, especially the investor-owned utility areas, PG&E, SC&E, and SDG&E. So you just had a lot of things in combination that came together. And for us personally, in Glendale, we have an aging power plant that just can't keep up. And so we can't, we don't have the reliance on the local generation. And then combined with that, our transmission, our limited transmission has been threatened several times by fire. This morning, it was a mechanical failure that they derated the line, so we lost 25 megawatts of import capability. We were trying to buy power at outrageous prices, I will tell you, but power we needed. And those purchases were negated because some of those came out of the QISO and the QISO won't let any energy leave their sphere of influence because they are so short, 4,000 megawatt short. But I think when we talk about a local source of generation, and as you said, whatever that local source is, this is exactly the incident and the issue that we would address with that. We, as we talked about Grayson often, we would begin to start to talk about the use of it as an emergency backup system. And that was to try to give folks a better feel of how we would use it. And that's exactly where we're at now. So it's not only the peak time of the year for heat wise and generation, but it's also now we face a statewide and region-wide emergency where we would not have some of the worries and some of the issues today that we have if we had ample local generation to rely on. Again, as you said, Mr. Najarian, whatever that generation is. But having a firm-established grid scale, grid scale alternative at Grayson would be ideal in these situations.
Are we okay for the next few days?
We had a pretty tough day today, Mr. Najarian. Today was estimated to be 103, it was about 109. We did about 338 today, which is only about 10 megawatts off our record. And I will tell you, that's with the 10 largest commercial users in the city being about 17.5% below their use of last year. So if this had been a normal business day, we would have been in pretty big trouble, I think. We lost 25 megawatts of our import power. They cut off our ability to buy from the outside. From our infrastructure standpoint, we've only had two transformer failures. We had our Howard, Shoal, and Rosboyn substations have been very strained because they are primarily residential substations and that's where a lot of the load is coming from as kids are home from school and people are home from work and those kind of things. And the other thing that's really, really hurt us is, I'll give you an example. This morning at 7 o'clock, it was 79 degrees. Tomorrow morning at 3, 4, and 5 AM, it will get the lowest, it will be at 77, and it starts to ramp up again. So when you talk about the coolest you can get it is down to 77 degrees, it's tough to sleep, it's tough to cool your house down, it's tough even to try to rejuvenate your systems to get them ready for the next day. So we keep our fingers crossed. So far, we've been very fortunate. And it's nice that we're, in this particular case, I hate to say it, I don't mean to cast disparaging remarks, this is a benefit of not being in the QISO system. And we've been fortunate to be able to have, you know, LA, which claims they've never had an outage due to heat in their system. So we will certainly keep Ms. Beers in the council posted. And my hope is, as temperatures begin to drop a little bit, we were hoping we're not going to see triple digits, but it's going to be sustained and the heat's going to stay up at night. So we will keep at it.
The temperature will drop very little. 97 will be the max, which is better than today, obviously.
Yes, yes. And that's really, I think, Mr. Najarian, where you get, we get ourselves in a problem is when you have consecutive days, and you've heard me say this before, consecutive days of high heat and nighttime temperatures that don't drop below 70 degrees. 70 is kind of our benchmark. We get a below 70, we can regroup. If you remember a couple of weeks ago, we were having some high temperatures, but it would cool off tremendously at night. And that was a totally different story.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I make?
Yes, Mr. Brodmann.
Yeah, I have a few points. I wasn't going to talk about this, but I want to mention something here. Because it's important, we tend to have an old way of thinking. And we think if we're short, we need to generate more. And that additional generation is going to be dirty energy. And I think what would have helped is if we had actually implemented load reduction strategies through energy efficiency, through local distributed solar and battery storage and through demand response. And if we could take that peak of 338 down to 275, just to pick up a number, that is a more cost effective, cleaner and smarter way to deal with this problem than automatically thinking, whenever you have a shortage, you need to build more generation. That's more dirty energy. So I just want to make that point because people tend to just see one side and they aren't looking holistically at the situation. That's one thing I just wanted to put that out there, but I actually had a few other items that I wanted to bring up, if I could. One, I have a nomination for Parks Commission. I want to nominate Jane Potell. She's somebody I got to know through environmental work here. She is, she's not a parks expert, but what I was really looking for is somebody that is a renter, lives in South Glendale and has kids and uses the parks and experiences, you know, the paucity of parks in the area of our city where we have the highest population density and, you know, the highest proportion of renters and the lowest income. So she lives in South Glendale. She has a six-year-old son, Luke. And she is a renter and she's very busy with her profession in marketing and communications, but she has a kind of boundless energy and is eager to serve the community. So I'm sure she'll bring a fresh perspective to the Parks Commission. And I don't know, do I need a second? I always forget how this works. No. So that was one thing. Another thing I wanted to mention was I attended a meeting of the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Powers Authority, where I have a seat on their board. A couple of things, we selected a new chair and vice chair. The new chair is Sharon Springer, Mayor of Burbank, and I am the vice chair. So I guess I'm moving up in the world, whatever that means. Anyway, we had a long session on our strategic plan and there's a general interest in broadening the scope of what the group does beyond simply allocating transportation funds to looking more at kind of the intersection between transportation and on the one hand, an environment and housing on the other. So this work is continuing, but I just wanted to let you know that there is this strategic planning process going on and it may change a little bit the nature of what that organization, that agency works on. And I also want to just thank Mr. Garcia and the legal team. I understand that you've offered to provide, along with Burbank, I think, some rotating legal support for the JPA and they really appreciate that. So that was my second one. One more. And that is, you know, maybe I wasn't paying attention, but I just learned that, I learned about our free childcare program. And I wanted to just make a shout out and just say, you know, to Onig and the team at Community Services and Parks, how, you know, proud I am to see, to see what we're doing. We have this childcare program at five parks and community centers and it's free and it's, and maybe Onig, if you could put up that flyer and just talk about it because I think it's a great thing that we're doing and people should see it. And if you're talking, you're on mute.
My apologies. Mayor Agajianian, members of the council, thank you. Our childcare program is starting tomorrow, August 19th. We're running through December 18th. Basically, we're on the GUSD calendar. Since they're starting school tomorrow, we will be holding our childcare program at five locations, 7 a.m. to 2 p.m., free of charge. And aftercare will be between 2 p.m. and 6 p.m. for $70 a week for non-residents. For Glendale residents, it'll be $55 a week. So we basically have 12 pods and this is a program, part of the, that was part of the business recovery strategy that Jen Herramido talked about a few weeks ago. And thanks to the Measure S funds that council allocated in the amount of $250,000, we'll be using some Measure S funds and some One Glendale funds that we have to operate the program through December. We have 12 pods at various locations, Maple Park, Pacific Community Center, Civic Auditorium, Dunsmore and Glen Oaks. We'll have our recreation leaders assisting the students in their learning. Thank you to our ISD department for providing the Wi-Fi capability. So fingers crossed, we'll have our program starting tomorrow. We have 89 students as of this afternoon that have signed up for the next couple of weeks. We hope to fill up our spots end of December. If anyone, any of our viewers are interested in signing up, they can call 818-548-2184 or they can also go online at glendaleca.gov/parks to apply for the program.
Thank you. And I'll finish with my comments. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Hello?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. You know, during the month of August, celebrations are taking place in honor of the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage in the United States. On August 18th, 1920, Tennessee became the 36th state to ratify the amendment, passing the three-fourths threshold needed for the amendment to become law. Eight days later, on August 26th, it was signed into law, granting women the right to vote. I just want to make sure that women are aware, that you exercise that right to vote. Historically, we really have moved rights forward significantly, but we're still a work in progress. And I do want to make note that next week, City Hall will be lit with purple and gold, I believe it is, in commemoration of this event. So to all the women, keep up the good work and don't forget to vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kusaki.
I just want to ask for a couple of items to be brought back. One is for us to have revisit the discussion about murals, public murals, councils' role and arts and culture commissions' role in it. And as well as, I would like to see us revisit and discuss an issue related to fences, the replacement of fences specifically. I know that there's a number of non-conforming fence uses in the city and as some of them become dilapidated and people try to replace them, they're running into some unforeseen problems. And I think that as council, we can probably look at this issue. It's been some time since we have to try and find a resolution that both the city and the residents can be happy with.
I'll second both of those.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
And one thing, I just want to wish all parents who have kids who are starting their Zoom classes today, tomorrow, I want to wish everyone good luck. I want to wish them a lot of patience, the patience of Job. I know that as my son starts kindergarten via Zoom, these are uncertain times. So we're with you, we empathize with you and we're going to get through this, hopefully to see better days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I would like to appoint Mr. Karo Minas for Design Review Board. My former appointee or the commissioner, Dr. Ariane Arzumanian, got married and she has resigned for a very good reason, of course. Mr. Karo Minas is resident of Glendale for over 40 years and he has a company here, is an engineer and it still works, of course, for 40 years. So I will turn in the application for, as a commissioner on DRB. Thank you. Okay, now what's next?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Yasmin Beers, yes.
Yes, yes, sir. If we can have Jennifer Herramoto give you an update on some of our programs that we have, she'll make a very quick presentation, sir.
No problem.
Thank you.
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As part of the economic recovery package for the COVID response, we are beginning the outreach for the Personal Protective Equipment Grant Program. We, just this week, the ambulance operators started going door to door to businesses. You will see some of their posts on social media, informing the public that we have the PPE program. Part of that is a $500 reimbursable grant program for any business that purchases any type of protective equipment. So businesses can begin applying for that on August 31st and they can get more information at chooseglendaleca.com. And again, that's a $500 reimbursable program. As part of the program as well, we will start free sanitizer distribution and there are events, a drive-through pickup event scheduled for August 24th from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. for businesses at 780 Flower Street. And we'll make sure to share this information as well. But businesses can come by and pick up four gallons worth of hand sanitizer and face masks and another event scheduled throughout the week. And folks can also come by for a clean hand store pickup at 117 Arts Oak Avenue, again, for free hand sanitizer. So we are excited to be able to continue implementing council's vision and supporting businesses as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be community event announcement, three-minute portion. Mayor, we do have five callers on the line right now.
All right, so now we'd like to take any calls from the public as relates to community event announcements. We will be taking no more than five callers? Do we have five callers?
We do have five callers.
Okay, we'll take more than five callers, if we have callers. Each speaker will be given three minutes to share their comments. Please, let's go to the first one.
Rea, you're live, go ahead.
Wonderful. Hello, Mr. Agajianian and councilmembers. I'm Ashen Azarian. I'm here to speak about forced mask wearing. I'm an American citizen in this free country. I have freedom of speech and freedom to not wear a mask. I am Christian and my religion does not allow me to cover my mouth and hinder me from God-given oxygen. I pray that you will not enforce us, wear burka anytime soon. Masks have been used throughout history in numerous rituals, liturgies. A liturgy is a religious practice. What religion are you becoming part of? It is just sickening to see oppression rule over my town. By the way, wearing a mask is a guideline according to California Health Department. It is not a law. The governor cannot pass a law. We had an emergency six months ago, which is now clear that it was a false alarm. Now, where is the emergency? Where is the pandemic? Stop the tactic of keeping people in fear. There is no emergency and there hasn't been one. We have been lied to and all lies are coming to surface slowly but surely. An emergency is sudden, unexpected and direct threat, grave peril. None of these definitions apply to us. Since there is no emergency, there are no grounds for emergency health orders. Thus, all these health orders are null and void. We don't have sufficient proof that there is real pandemic. If there was real pandemic, you would all be dead by now, including myself. Further, the board needs to vote to determine the health emergency immediately as required by law. Failure to do so puts the board members at risk for fraud. Fraud is when you misrepresent information for gain. Fraud is a felony. A felony carries a prison sentence. No wonder so many of these health officers are resigning. Are you going to tell us next month you are required, we are required to wear a mask while we are having sex with our spouses in our bedroom? Would any one of you adhere to that requirement? I want because I am a healthy citizen. Masks are not considered personal protective equipment and they will not protect the wearer against airborne transmissible infectious agents due to loose fit and lack of seal or inadequate filtration. People who choose to not wear masks are not sick nor they are dying. You don't have unlimited powers to infringe upon our rights. We have a right to breathe freely, sing in our churches and not be harassed by mask wearers. To conclude, there is no state emergency, therefore, there should not be forced mask wearing. We, as healthy Americans, must have freedom to choose, freedom from these muzzles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Susan, you're live, Susan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajianian, City Councilmember, City Staff and others. Susan Wilson, Glendale resident. I want to thank you for serving our city and seeing us through this challenging time of uncertainty. And also thank you for the Safe Streets project. I've noticed some developments in my area and I really do appreciate that. Tonight, I want to talk about the Rossmoyn Historic District. And as you know, this historic district is the largest historic district in the city with over 500 homes. And 85% of our homes were contributors when the district was created in 2012. And by the way, more than 75% of the residents in the neighborhood wanted the historic district when the survey was performed. That was required as part of the application. Now, this large historic district is an attraction for our city. It's a prized neighborhood for home buyers in large part because of the character homes. But lately, I have noticed activity taking place that will degrade the character of our precious neighborhood. There's a home that's located at 850 East Glen Oaks Boulevard, which has been altered to a point where the original architecture is not even recognizable. And the driveway at that location, as I've passed by numerous times, I've noticed it's so narrow. I believe it's in violation of our municipal code section 30.32.130C. These changes took place a few years ago, but I've seen no signs that any remediation is taking place. Now, in another case, more recent, we have the home at 1254 Apple Street, which just sold in April. Since the sale, they have replaced the windows. And by the way, those original, historically accurate windows were in excellent condition. And in fact, the entire home was in excellent condition because many of us noticed it with pleasure during the time it was being marketed for sale. Those original windows must be returned to this contributor home. And we've seen no correction, no corrective actions taken. I haven't seen a stop order posted there or anything. So this brings me to a question. Why is it that some homes are cited endlessly and others are continued, they are allowed to continue and they're making true violations of our city's codes? I know the home on Descano Drive, where the new owner merely wanted to restore the home to its historical glory. The project was held up for nearly two years, two years. Meanwhile, over here on Apple Street, we have this lovely historic district contributor being ravaged and no one seems to be saying a word. I'm quite certain that I'm not the only inquiring mind and not the only dismayed resident. Every time someone is allowed to flout the historic district rules, it leaves others with the impression that this kind of activity is allowed. Human beings are primates. They imitate whatever they see. We do not want to see our We do not want to see our remarkable Rossmoyn Historic District gradually degraded nibble by nibble. Volunteers in our neighborhood worked too hard to earn the designation, and all of us prize it too dearly to let this happen. I'm pleading with council and staff to please take more aggressive actions in the two cases I mentioned, and in any others that are brought to their attention. And perhaps Mr. Lanziffi can answer my question about the apparent selective enforcement of the codes. So anyhow, I don't know how much time I've used. I want to thank you for the opportunity to make this request. And again, I want to thank you for your service during these difficult times.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Dave, you're live, Dave. Dave, can you hear me? Dave, can you hear me? Dave, can you hear me? Dave?
No. Dave? Okay, next caller.
Tony, you're live, Tony?
Thank you, Arm. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Tony Passerello. Arm's gonna put up a couple of photos here, and I'll talk over those when they get up there. I want to talk about COVID. By the way, that first woman speaker, she nailed it 100%, and I say amen to that. California, let me give you some stats. Let's get some data out there. CDC data, in California, COVID death by age, 70-plus, 46,000 cases, 7,000 deaths. Age 17 and under, 62,233, to be exact. And zero deaths in the state of California. Let me repeat that, zero deaths reported, 17 and under. So why are we closing the playground? No, instead, you want to open up the parks and have these pods with Wi-Fi radiating the children and closing the, you know, the parks where they, they're out in the fresh air and getting exercise for no reason whatsoever.
Mr. Passerello, Mr. Passerello, I'm sorry. Oh, now we are showing the pictures, okay. I was not seeing the pictures, so I thought maybe...
Yeah, there it is. So you got the crime tape, and then you got this orange mesh. This is in Nibley Park, okay? And then you got the tennis players over there just in the back right, you can't see them. That is open. The kids play for clothes, but the tennis courts are open for adults. And then you got the picnic tables that are also open. There's no crime tape on the picnic table, so people are sitting at the tables. I go by there all the time, and there's no enforcement. There they are, right there. There they are, picnicking with a checkered tablecloth and the whole nine. You've got fines out there, putting more pressure on people and parents. $400 fine. Now, this one, this one has really got me. This is Fremont Park. These are the seniors playing those games like they do every single afternoon. They're shoulder to shoulder. Nobody has a mask on here. There's no enforcement. So I'd like to know what's going on in this city. How is this being managed? This COVID crisis in this city is being ridiculously managed, all right? And the playground now, it appears you take the swings down. The playground there at Fremont appears to be open. I see kids playing on it, but Nibley is closed. Milford Mini Park, that's closed, but yet they can picnic there. It's all ridiculous. So my ask is to open up the playground, let the kids play, let them get exercise. By the way, suicide is up. Child molestation is up. Physical abuse is up during this crisis, and you don't want to let the children play in the playground. It's absurd, and it's criminal that you're not allowing this. Ages 18 to 29, seven and a half times less likely to die from COVID. Ages 75 and up, 400 times more likely to die of COVID, all right? Face mask syndrome. People are getting disease in their skin. They're having to go to the dermatologist. This whole thing is being inflated by, the numbers are inflated. People with, that have never been tested are being tested positive. People that have died from suicide, car accidents, motorcycle accidents, injuries are being labeled, labeled as death. And if you don't believe me, go do your own research. I do plenty and plenty of research here, all right? I got all kinds of notes here. Oh, the seasonal flu, let's talk about that. In the last 10 years, the seasonal flu, and we didn't close everything down. We're not wearing a mask during the seasonal flu. Why is that? The CDC, up to 45 million illnesses every year in the last 10 years. 810,000 up to hospitalizations from influenza every year over the last 10 years. 61, up to 61,000 deaths over the last 10 years, every year from seasonal influenza. No masks, no lockdowns. What is going on, people?
Mr. Passerello, you passed way over the three minutes.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Karen, you're live, Karen?
Hi, this is Karen Quark. I also have a few pictures that I would like to share with you. I sent them to Mr. Agajanian earlier this afternoon. I was wondering if you could be so kind as to post them for me.
Karen, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, there's a slight delay, so I'm not sure that I'm seeing what you're seeing. So bear with me for a bit here. Okay, last Saturday, October 15th, Anthony McLean was shot in the back by the Pasadena police. On Sunday, we held a march, a rally, and a vigil for him. Mr. McLean was 32, and he was simply sitting in the passenger seat of a car. And I can't say this enough, he was shot in the back. I realize that investigation needs to happen, but that pretty much does everything that I need to know. Okay, so the first picture shows the memorial set up at the site where Mr. McLean was arrested. And it shows that he is somebody's son. He is somebody's brother. He is somebody's father. He is somebody's son. Slide 2, please.
Is this it, Karen?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, slide, this is the place where Mr. McLean was arrested. The grass still bears his blood. And as you can see, people have covered them with candles. May I see slide 3?
Go ahead, Karen, next slide.
Okay, slide 3 shows Mr. McLean from the family, speaking very passionately about him. And these are voices that I hear constantly. I've been hearing these voices for years. I noticed, however, at the June 7th vigil for George Floyd Health in Glendale, where 3,000 protesters stood outside City Hall, that for the politicians in the crowd, you have probably never heard these voices up close before. And I need you to hear these voices, because I hear these voices constantly in daily life, but I know that these voices are not getting heard inside City Hall. So I'm doing my best to convey their voices to you. Okay, but picture 4 is a rally that we had in front of the Pasadena Police Station, ahead of the vigil. So we're actually going back in time. Then if we could march forward to picture 5 and 6? Okay, picture 5 shows the marchers marching in 97-degree heat at 4:00 in the afternoon, shutting down traffic. And as you can see, we are a very diverse group. Okay, that last picture, slide 6, is of course me. And as you can see here, I'm multitasking. I'm helping the crowd stop traffic at an intersection. I'm holding up a sign, and I'm also demonstrating the correct way to wear a face mask, which is as a political statement. The word on my mask is justice, and I will keep bringing these masks to your attention until we achieve that goal of justice. Because the greatest privilege that any of us have is life itself. The statistics show that black people live consistently three to seven years shorter than white people, and this is their life expectancy at birth. I'm going to have to point out that Asian-Americans actually live eight years longer than white people on average. So this is very much a privilege that I enjoy, too. And we will know when racism is no longer a factor in our lives when we see all of these numbers line up exactly the same regardless of race. And I will remind you of this from time to time until we hit that goal. Okay, also, there were a few comments made earlier this afternoon in the Housing Authority meeting, which I need to clarify, because housing justice is racial justice. Okay, according to the new rent relief program issued by LA County, the county estimates that 9,000 households will be helped by this program. I have no idea how many applicants they will have, but I will tell you that LA County, minus the city of LA proper, holds 6 million people. So it is highly likely that people who apply will walk away empty-handed. As I wrote in an email, my membership, earlier today, according to the Glendale Lottery, only 190 people.
Karen, your time is up for a long time ago. Are you, please finish your sentence.
Yes, I can finish it closely. And so, as I put it, the odds of you winning the lottery were actually lower than getting into Harvard. That is, there are a huge number of people who are not going to be helped by either of these programs. A lot more help is still needed.
Karen, time's up. Thank you for calling.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next, please.
Mayor, there are no more phone calls.
Oh, no more calls. What happened to Dave? Did not come back?
Dave did not call back, no.
No. Okay, all right. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next would be oral communications, and we do not have any phone calls at this time.
Okay. And what's next?
Next would be new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have some new business.
Councilmember Najarian?
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a legal services agreement with the law firm Holland &amp; Hart, LLP, to draft and negotiate contracts for a proposed virtual power plant for the city of Glendale, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter.
Thank you. All right. Well, is there a second? A good roll call, roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Krasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Adjournment. Move to adjournment.
Okay. I have the seconds. Thank you. With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 7:23 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.